Thank you Mayor, Councilman, and Attorney. Attorney, thank you so much for having me this evening. I haven't had to work all like that since the last time I was here. I'm here so I'm very late. I want to thank you so much for the opportunity to come down here tonight, spend a few moments with you. It's part of my district tour that I try to do this with every city council and every town board each twice a year, once after the summer study session is finished and also after legislative session. So, I want to thank you for giving just a few minutes tonight to talk a little bit about a couple of things that I think that you want to be probably aware of and kind of watch what's coming up in the new session in 2015. Now, first of all, I want to start out by saying that a lot of people don't understand what a summer study committee is, so I thought I'd better start by just making a brief explanation. A summer study committee is a committee that's put together, already a standing committee, but it's put together in the summertime to study pieces of legislation that either were filed and didn't get heard during the session because the author of that respective legislation said, "I think I want to plug back and have a summer study session on it and allow people to kind of testify for or against it to see how much the success chances are of it going forward." Or, you can file a resolution on anything and ask the legislative council to have a summer study committee on the respective issue that you're interested in pursuing. And that's what summer studies are. We've had a number of them this year, like twenty-one committees that met, they call them summer study, we start usually in August, we finish up by the first of October. So, I want to start out by saying that I had the pleasure of being invited down to the Governor's office back on November seventeenth, spent about an hour and a half with Governor Pence talking about this issue of what's coming up in session, where he stands on respective issues, and Governor Pence is going to unveil his 2015 agenda about Wednesday of this week in and after. So, we didn't get the full discussion of what he's fully going to be pursuing during the session, but we did have the opportunity to discuss some of the few things that concern me. And I will say this, one of the things that I was very concerned with, the fact that the Governor stopped almost cold in his tracks to pursue of eighty million dollars coming back for pre-aidation for our school system, and I was glad, quickly asked him directly if that was a political decision. He said, "No, it was not." And my question is that if we don't pursue it, because he wanted to watch the pilot program we adopted this year go forward to see how successful it is, if we don't pursue it, how long is it going to determine if the pre-K program is successful or not? And if it's not, or if it is, are we going to be able to pursue that eighty million dollars that later day? And the Governor didn't know at this time whether we would. But, he did assure us he's putting in over ten million dollars in the budget for a line item for pre-K as we move forward now because we already have ten million approved for this year. So, we are happy for that. And the Governor did say that he wants the 2015 session to be known as the educational session. And I told him I was happy to hear that. We've gone after education, we put three hundred million dollars out of public education a few years ago, and we've not replaced any of it. So, hopefully this year, the one thing in education that we're going to be looking at is a new funding formula and hopefully providing more funding for public education. I can only hope that that's the case. But, that in itself is what the, 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 the Governor had to tell. But, I want to talk about a few things that's kind of directly associated with people in LaPorte, LaPorte County, St. Joe County, Sartre County that are represented. And one of them is the public policy. Public policy is going to be one of the key issues in the 2015 general session. By the way, I should have probably said this, the 2015 general session will commence on Tuesday, January sixth. That will be our first actual day in full session. So, that, and we have to be out. We have to sign and die on April third. So, we're going to be down there for four months trying to hammer out a budget, which is already the key issue. Everybody knows that we're going to be casting probably in the area of about a thirty billion dollar budget for two years, so everybody wants to get their piece of the action, get their, their finger in the pie so to speak. So, they're already starting their jacking about at the State House, at least they were this morning when I left down there. So, public policy. If you're not familiar with public policy, public policy handles alcohol, gambling, tobacco, firearms, that's a committee that hears all those bills. We are very, very proud and very fortunate to have the Chairman of the Public Policy in the House be our own Representative, Tom Durham from here in LaPorte. He's done a magnificent job, now it's going to be his second year. The only thing I complain about him, the fact he killed one of my bills last year after I died of our public policy, he killed it in the House. So, we had an interesting discussion this last week around Thanksgiving dinner. So, anyway, public policy, and here's what we're going to be faced with. And if you're not a gambler, you don't go to the casinos, I understand that, it'll criticize anybody for that, but people have to realize that the gambling is a reality and a way of life in our state. We adopted it, we accepted it, and it's here. Now, we've got to make sure that we continue to see if those people survive and they flourish because we rely on the gambling revenue in our state. And a lot of people criticize that. You know, you criticize it all you want, but the last thing that we can have before it happens in our community is an Atlantic City where four casinos close to the two-hundred-eight thousand jobs. We cannot afford to have that happen in Indiana. So, we've met three sessions during the summer. We had representatives of every casino, all eleven casinos, and both racinos. And that would be Anderson, Indiana, and Shelbyville, Indiana. And a racino is where you have a racetrack and a casino. A representative was there for every session, had a chance to testify, Representative Durham did a magnificent job, and he got a lot of accolades even from my side in the hour because of the way he conducted the meeting. The gambling revenue in the state of Indiana is falling off. We lost out about ninety million for projections, what we thought it would be, because of not only the outside competition we had, Illinois, Ohio, Michigan, and soon to be probably Kentucky, but because of the fact that people don't have the revenue, don't have the income that they had at one time to participate in the gambling. And their gambling rev, the gambling revenue has fallen off, but the tax revenue that we rely on is also falling off. So, we've got to find ways to think outside the box, to think of ways to make sure that our casinos, and I always quote Blue Chip because that's my hometown in Michigan City, we've got to make sure that these casinos continue on. We've got to make sure they continue to flourish after the millions and millions and millions of dollars they brought into our community. And LaPorte County is the recipient of a lot of those tax dollars down there. So, we listened to casinos about the problems they had, and here are just four ways, and keep this in mind, all the things I talked about tonight that came out of summer study committees, these are only, only discussions. They're not, they're not set in stone, nothing has even been proposed yet. This is only discussion purposes. I mean, people thank you on it. Last time I put on a presentation, I had one of our locals call up, and it was really a critical of me about what I'm proposing, what I'm doing. I'm not doing anything. I'm telling you what was discussed down here. There still has to be a bill proposed, the bill has to go through the entire process, either in the House or the Senate, and it has some good houses passed there before it ends up on Governor Pence's desk. So, these are only proposals and things that we're looking at. Number one, we're looking at the possibility of changing the admission tax. Every time a person goes into that casino, or any casino, whether they gamble or not, they go through that gate, it's a three dollar admission tax that the casino has to pay to the state. Every penny of that three dollars goes to local development agreements, to LaPorte County, to LaPorte, to Michigan City. Every casino has agreement. So, every time you go through that turnstile, whether you gamble or not, and just go in there to talk to somebody, go out and go back in again, that's three dollars every time you go through there, that casino has to pay, you know, towards local development agreements. We're looking at ways because it's really drawing on their revenue that they have to pay them. We're looking at ways to perhaps alter that admission tax in some way to assist the casinos as well as keep our local development agreements as well. These are things that we're trying to think of and how we can help them. Along with that is, very few people probably realize if you go to a casino and they give you a free night in the, in the spa tower, or they give you five dollar free play, they have to pay tax on that whether you use it or not. They're taxed on that, and that's free play tax. Right now, we're able to give each casino a five million dollar exemption, up to five million dollars. They're exempt from paying tax for that, but after five million dollars, they have to pay taxes on it, and that's draining casinos as well. So, we're looking at that as well. We've also been hearing about land-based casinos. Right now, the Majestic Star over in Lake County has two boats out there. They want to build a land-based casino. We are suggesting that they allow the land-based casino because it's going to be more jobs, it's going to be more revenue for the state of Indiana. The only stipulation would be if this would pass, it has to be built on the footprint of the current facility. They can't take the, just like the Majestic Star, one of the real irritation points over the years with the Majestic Star, has been the fact that they want to take their casino and build a land-based casino out on I-94 and I-65. That won't happen. If we allow land-based casino, it would be with a stipulation, it has to be built on the footprint or right on our property, right next to our current casino, and they have to have owned that property prior to July first of 2014, which means that land has to already be owned by then, prior to July this year, or they can't build it. That's a stipulation to keep the land-based casino fit. And finally, the other thing is that we've discussed, the racinos. Racinos in Indiana are not allowed by statute to have live dealers. If you go in and play poker, you want to play craps, or whatever the case may be, you're playing electronics, there are no live dealers. They want live dealers for racinos, and we suggest that that be allowed. That will help them out, it'll create more jobs for them, it'll create more income. When people come in, and I don't particularly play craps or play blackjack or whatever, but people want to come in and talk to a live person dealing their card to a medical machine chip or, or a computer chip dealer. So, those are recommendations that we came forward with this year to look at, to explore. Not to say these are going to happen, but they're something that I think that warrants everybody in the legislature to take a hard core look at. Now, keep in mind, Governor Pence came out in harvest and said he is absolutely against any expansion of gambling. The only problem is that the Governor hasn't explained to us yet what his definition of expansion of gambling is. We have not been able to find out what that is yet. So, we're hoping that maybe the items we just discussed, maybe the Governor would be receptive to that, and if the Governor says, "Okay, you know, it's, you know, I'll go along with it." But, you know, of course, if the Governor would go along, if it still passes, there's still such, you know, the veto, the popular record. That's so far down the road, now we don't need to talk about that. The only other thing that would do, comes up every year in public policy, it's going to come up again this year, we're trying to work out some kind of agreement, and that's Sunday sales of alcohol. Every year it comes up, every year it doesn't receive a hearing, comes back again the following year, it's over and over and over again. I'm in favor of bringing that forward, bringing it up for a vote, up or down, and let's move on because I've heard in the last seven sessions I've been in the legislature, Sunday sales of alcohol. It's time that we either bring it on the floor, vote it up or down, and move on. Right now, we're one of only two or three states in the United States that don't allow alcohol sales to set that. So, that's going to come up again. So, Representative Durham is going to play a very important part of that in the House, and being a ranking member in public policy in the Senate, maybe we can work some kind of a debate out there, we can hear something, everybody can benefit from it. So, enough said on that. I want to talk briefly about transportation. We have lost tremendous amounts of revenue because of the curtailing of driving going on in the state of Indiana, because of the constant cost of upkeep and new construction of roads in Indiana as well. We have lost gas tax revenue. As you well know, we pay eighteen cents a tax on every gallon of gas we use in the state. Now, that was passed back in 2003, so we have a tax to that now going on for about, about twelve years. It's been eighteen cents. It's time to work, I have to look at some new ways to raise revenue. Our revenue is drastically falling off. You know, Mayor, I have to remind you, the heat you're getting because of the roads in LaPorte. And I tell people, we have to make good in the city, we have to make good in the town. The money's not coming back, we don't have it now, now it's getting out. We've got to think of ways to replace lost revenue and generate new revenue. The Governor of Michigan, we're just on TV tonight, they're going to double their gas tax up to forty-three cents in the next four years to generate money to pay for their road construction. We've got to do something, we've got to do something. You just can't build these infrastructures and think they're going to last forever. They've got to be maintained, they've got to be maintained. So, we're looking at different ways to probably enhance, or possibly enhance the gas tax revenue and the bridge repair. We've got to think, again, think outside the box. What does that mean? To look at a gas tax increase, you know, it could be two cents, three cents, it may be a nickel, I don't know. I'm not the one that has a bill authored, nobody has a bill authored at this time, but that's where the things we're looking at, to enhance revenue that's possibly raising the gas tax. Here's the problem we have in raising gas tax. A lot of people now are thinking into the future and buying electric cars. Electric cars don't use gas, they don't pay gas tax, but electric cars use on roads, they still drive just like cars do, and they cause wear and tear on the roads. So, they're looking at, and a couple of states have already adopted this, are looking at a user's tax. If you have a gas, if you drive a electric car, you could be prorated on the miles you drive and tax accordingly to the miles you drive, which would go into road maintenance. Again, we'll be thinking outside the box, looking at this. But, people cannot use our roads, cause wear and tear on our roads, like anything else and not have to pay for it. It's only fair that they should have to pay their fair share. Also, one of the things that we did do starting this year is we took the Indiana State Police, and very few people ever realize it, the Indiana State Police operating budget, which is the total of about a hundred and eighty billion dollars to pay the troopers on the road, the equipment, we took the entire operating budget of the Indiana State Police out of the road tax. That's where it used to be funded from. We took that out of the road tax and put them under the general fund. So, now their operating budget comes out of the general fund, and that money now will be in the, for road maintenance and road repair. That should help us out somewhat as we move forward. So, we were looking at different ways and different ideas, believe me, and I'm open to any comments that you may have, you know, as far as it goes. There's going to be some ethics legislation, and quite truthfully, it's a long time overdue. We're going to have some new ethics legislation coming in the legislature this year. Don't know what it's going to be yet because the Speaker of the House, Speaker Bobina, has said it's going to come out of the House because that's where the so-called scandal came out of this year last year, and subsequently, they want to put a new bill together in the House and say, "Oh, it's a sin." And I think what you're going to see is, there's going to call for more intricate and detailed information involving individual legislators, what kind of holdings, what kind of accounts they have, what kind of interests they have with respect to your bank. Now, you, when you file for your election, you're going to fill out that little thing, little sheet of paper that we fill out downstate, and I offered that bill three years ago. It was probably, I got it through because you fill out the same type of paperwork now when you file your candidacy than I fill out. If it changes downstate, and I have to, going to file another bill to make sure you fill out the same paperwork as we have to fill out. I'm a strong believer, as ranking member of the Ethics Committee, I'm a strong believer that, hey, I have no problem opening up my, my accounts, what I own, I have holdings in and so forth, my accounts, I have no, no problem with that whatsoever, and I think anybody who wants to put their name in a ballot, wants to be elected, needs to be accountable to the people, the city of Indiana, no matter what the capacity is, and they should fill out the same paperwork. So, the Ethics Bill, we don't know what it entails yet, will come out of the House. A couple of things real quick to hear, the State Board of Accounts, and I see there was a big audit in the paper yesterday, the State Board of Accounts is having a real issue. People come in and do the audits of the books, at least you're well aware of the State Board of Accounts, they're having a real issue. They don't have enough field examiners, they're way behind in their work. I met with the new State Board of Account Director about a month ago, and talked to him, he said, "We've got to have more inspectors, or we're going to have to look at different ways to fund the State Board of Accounts and their revenue." And here's some of the things they brought up. Number one, they're looking at, they pay forty-five dollars a day, is that correct? They come in and they charge you forty-five dollars a day to audit your books, they're looking at upping that to about a hundred and seventy-five dollars a day. Or, or, they're looking at the fact that we're drawing all the audits, and you have to hire a private audit to come in and do it, and I have no idea what that would cost, probably in the area of about a hundred and fifty dollars an hour for them to come in here. And we're talking, in some counties, in some areas, we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars if they would come in and have to charge to do a private audit, and you have to have it done by statute. So, we're looking at various ways, and I talked to Paul Joyce, when I met him, I'm a big, big believer, it's our obligation, it's our duty, we need to have more field examiners to have it done. Or, or the fact is, they may only go to one audit every four years. One audit every four years will come in, unless you're at risk. You have problems going to pass, they can come in and they can do an audit then, otherwise they would come in and pass the every four years. These are all things you're just looking at right now. So, from my reading, I'd rather see the state fund, get more examiners, keep it on a yearly basis, to look there and hopefully find any mistakes. And finally, I just want to talk, and there was one, one committee called Environmental Affairs Committee that's only looking at, with no recommendation even came out of the committee, and that's new standards for septic systems and sewage disposal. They didn't come out with any recommendations, it probably won't happen, anything probably won't happen this year, but they're looking at the possibility of new standard. We've had a tremendous issue with the environmental protective agency in the state about the way the sewage disposals are operating, about the way septic systems are operating. So, they met this year, they came up with several points, but there were no recommendations. They were only ideas that they're taking from, so they may wait for another year or so before anything comes up, but it is on the back burner, so they're looking for management. As far as the purpose and turf of the public employees retirement fund, teachers retirement fund, it was also in that committee this summer, they're rolling south, the funding is there. The funding is there, those people are solvent, there's no, every year people start getting skinny food. The money is there, it's been invested, it's been invested properly, returning to good, so everybody's pension is still solid. That makes me happy. But, people, tell you the truth, don't worry about it, we've got the money. I don't know what's in store for the cities and towns. Hopefully, nothing, hopefully they'll leave you alone this year, but I'm sure they're going to come up with something. But, I look forward to working with you, I'll have everybody in the audience as well. If you have an open invitation to come down to the legislature, come down and see your legislature and work, you'll be tickled, you'll be happy down there. Or, you may be disillusioned, I don't know. But, if you have an open invitation to come down and see myself, I'll speak for Representative Durham as well, and if you have any ideas that pass out, it's a slip of neighbor's tongue, and Congressman Rosensky brought up a couple of spelling errors, I don't care. I'm in, I'm in challenge, I don't do this. So, please, take advantage of it. Be more than happy to answer any question you might have, Mayor, or anybody that might have a question, if I can answer.
Greatly appreciate you taking the time to come and give us the update on what we can expect for the upcoming session, and glad to hear about a number of initiatives, particularly in the area of roads and streets, that this has been, as you know, a major concern of ours for quite some time. And so, glad to hear that there's going to be some discussion about that, hopefully the cities and towns are considered in those discussions, and it's not just looking at the state roads, but also at local roads and some of the funding that we have there as well. But, then outside of that, if we can, then, I know it's been discussed, the possibility of a breather for cities and towns, and I know that that would certainly be appreciated.
Well, I will throw this out, but I should have asked for probably a presentation. Senator Tim Skinner, who, my roommate down the Senate, last year when the budget passed, we, we added an additional two hundred million this year, an additional two hundred million after the first of the year, once the Budget Committee looks at it and makes sure it's there, for road maintenance. The Commissioner, Browning, testified before our committee that it takes about seven hundred and fifty million dollars a year just to maintain our roads and bridges. This isn't new construction, this is just to maintain it, and they're falling way short. So, we appropriated an additional four hundred million above the budgetary provision. Senator Skinner proposed ten million be taken out of that, strictly earmarked for cities and towns and roads, and it was defeated. They couldn't get that, they couldn't get that out of the Senate floor.
Well, I, I know that we, many of the mayors have appreciated the effort that went towards putting a little more money towards local roads and streets. As you talked a little bit about purpose solvent, that, glad that that's the situation there, but a number of the cities that the increase that they got in roads was then taken away from what was required to make sure that purpose solvent, and so it then almost becomes a wash. So, I mean, different pots of money, but that's sort of the situation. But, glad to hear that the conversation is coming up, and really appreciated your participation and the opportunity that we had, a number of mayors that gathered in LaPorte a couple of weeks ago to meet with our, a number of regional state representatives and state senators, and State Senator Arnold was very good to be there as well as State Representative Durham, and very good discussion was had. So, very much appreciate the working relationship that we have, that I always can count on you to be able to talk through things during the session, and really appreciate that. I don't want to dominate it, so if there are council members that have questions for State Senator Arnold, then, we can follow.
I do have one question. When you go June or sixth, excuse me, do you have an agenda for the whole session, or is it sort of day by day after that first few days?
No, we have, we have our calendar already for the days we'll be meeting, Monday and Tuesday, the Senate and House are the same, Monday and Tuesday we're in session. We have committee meetings in the morning, session in the afternoon. Wednesday is committee meetings all day, Thursday, committee meetings in the morning, session in the afternoon, they're done, that's why you said on the Sunday we come home. Those are the days. Now, you're talking about an agenda? No, because right now, bills are being drafted, bills haven't even opened filing here to get, the bill's haven't been filed, so we don't know who's filing and what at this point. So, we don't have an agenda. The agenda is printed up day by day, you know, once the bills are filed. And remember, once a bill is filed, it's assigned to a committee, that committee chairman has sole power whether he's going to hear that bill or not. We'll have time, it'll work from twelve o'clock to fifteen, hear a bill filed, and the committee chairman decides which bill he wants to hear. If he doesn't want to hear that bill, it may be the greatest thing in the world, but if the chairman doesn't want to hear it, he doesn't have to hear it, and it's up to him. So, you know, it's a case of just trying to work together and put the politics aside and start working a little better for the people essential down here.
One brief question, you mentioned in your, your talk that the State Police budget was going to be swallowed up by the general fund?
It's already up.
One hundred and eighty million?
Hundred and ninety million.
Who do you know that loses that in the general fund? If they're absorbing a hundred and eighty million, something's going to lose out.
No, we've had, we've got two point two billion surplus right now. Nobody's going to lose any. That's all for, that, and that was taken out, that's all compensated for by projections of income. They figured out what's going to be projected income, road fuel tax, gaming tax, personal income tax, corporate income tax, you know, a sales tax, that's all projected, nobody's going to lose that.
So, they proceed doing that for the future?
The State Police budget?
Yeah.
It's up, it's up. I don't, that'll, that will never come back.
I just want to know something that'll lose out, that's all.
The issue of realizing, we don't operate at a loss at this state government. That's not good government. The mayor's shaking her head.
Can you give us a little bit of information of which way you're leaning towards, the toll road, so again, that you're looking at? I know the county commissioners are on board, I don't know if the county council's behind them, but does that take state action too? Would you be involved in that?
I would hate to sit here and kind of voice my, one way or another, because I want a certification, but maybe it hasn't come up. We've had discussions in the hall with some of the other legislators about it, I had discussions with some of my fellow office holders over in other counties about it. You know, it sounds good, I'm, I'm still not understanding the whole thing, how we can do, how we can do this and operate at such a great, I mean, the state couldn't do it, we brought one in, they couldn't do it, and so, I don't know. If they can do it, I'm not a, I'm not a figures man. I just, I just throw this out there, I pulled over my committee assignments, got my committee assignments today, and I'm now on the Insurance and Financial Institutions Committee. And I called down, I said, "I don't even do my own banking, Lauren does the banking." I wouldn't put me on this committee, you know? So, when I talk about figures and millions and that, I kind of start to clear it up, they're going to have to, you know, they're going to have to show it. I'm not going to say it can't be done, but you know what? They're going to have to show it.
I know you started to what, you were talking about some of the gaming laws, and you had mentioned like the three dollar tax that they pay in and out.
Emission tax?
And it didn't dawn on me to where, you know, being, after attending a lot of functions at like the Blue Chip, where I would see people walk back and forth and maybe enter the casino streaking. So, actually, they're paying that tax three, some of the, three times.
Three dollars. If you want to just keep walking through that turnstile, you can cross Blue Chip Casino or Boyd Gaming, three dollars every time you go through there.
Do you ever speculate how much money that they, that they feel that they're losing for people walking back and forth?
Well, I got the figures at home, I interacted in the file cabinet downstate. Last year, gaming, they're projecting three hundred and seventy million dollars a tax. And here's something I should bring up, Joe, for just a second. The taxes. Blue Chip pays overall taxes north of forty percent. Above, on all their wind tax or emission tax, nearly forty percent, they pay tax. I met with the Pocahontas tribe on September second, on Center Road, and I met with St. Joe County Pocahontas tribe. And if you're nationally, the Pocahontas are looking, you know, in my district, in St. Joe County, right off of twenty-three, and they want to meet with us because, you know, to make sure we're on board. I don't have a problem with that. You know, the problem I have is, I told John Warren, who's the CPO for the Pocahontas, "You know, you only pay eight percent taxes in Buffalo, Blue Chip pays forty percent for the state." And he said, "No, I'm going to correct you, we pay six percent." So, we corrected him right there in spite, so, "No, we pay six percent taxes." And they don't have to pay taxes on the table games. That's why you can get your George Foreman grills and your own grills and all the things they give out up there every week, you know. Blue Chip and the other casinos can't afford that because they're paying such a high rate of tax. And I don't have a problem with the Indians coming in and building a casino down there. All I told John Warren was, I don't have a problem with you coming in, they're going to build healthcare facilities down there, they're going to build educational facilities, they're going to build housing facilities. Those are the first three things, along with the casino. And I don't have a problem with that, but I want to make it fair, you know, that they pay their fair share of taxes. And when I said that Blue Chip pays forty percent, now you just told me you pay six. He said, "Well, I suggest, Senator, that you work on the state and bring theirs down closer to our, because we're not going to pay that way." And you can't make it, the thing that you have to remember about the Indian casinos, they don't operate under the state gaming budget. They operate under the United States Department of the Chair and the Bureau of Indian Affairs. They don't operate under the state. If they want to build a casino on their land, you can't, you know, once they get the approval from the federal government, you can't stop them. So they're good people to work with, they're really sound citizens, they give a lot back to their community, but we want to try and get our fair share for the state as well. That's, that's all, it's just a fair way to make sure we get our fair share. Mayor, thank you so much. Council, thank you, it's always a pleasure to have you here. I will see you again if not before, but I'll see you after session. We'll come back and talk about all the wonderful things we do for you. I hope you're all still smiling, and I'm going to go home and do my own stuff, thank you very much.
Thank you.